Good evening. We will now call our April 14th, 2015 School Board of St. Lucie County's regular meeting to order. We extend a warm welcome to all of you that are here tonight, and we hope that you had a wonderful spring break. And we're back to work now. We want to also welcome our viewing audience as well. Board members and audience, we do have a special treat this evening. This evening, we have our students from Francis K. Sweet, under the direction of Mrs. Nippa, to perform for us this evening. And we also want to recognize the principal of Francis K. Sweet, which is Juanita Wright. I ask my fellow board members that we sit within the audience as usual, so we can get a better view of our performance. Would everyone please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Kids, let's hope, pledge, and afterwards, we will hear from Francis K. Sweet.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
What we learn and what we know will make what we become. There's nothing good to gain in life by acting like we're dumb. We use our brains; we have the right to know. We're smart, we're smart, and wise, and wise. Our knowledge makes us grow. We talk the talks; we walk the walks. We know education rocks. We talk the talks; we walk the walks. We know education rocks and rolls. Yeah, it rocks and rolls. Yeah, it rocks. Give your wrist and have the feet, our baggage for a fool. We're loving sport and rocking out, working ourselves in school. We'll use our brains; let education rule. We're smart, we're smart, and wise, and wise. Our knowledge makes us grow. We talk the talks; we walk the walks. We know education rocks. We talk the talks; we walk the walks. We know education rocks and rolls. We know education rocks and rolls. Yeah, it rocks and rolls. Yeah, it rocks and rolls. Yeah, it rocks and rolls. Education rocks.
Can we sing one more?
The future's calling us. The future's calling us. The future's calling us, calling us. We did the things that we set out to do. We gave it all we had and made it through. We're taking it to the next level up. The future's not a waste time to go. One, two, three, pick it up. Future's calling us. One, two, three, pick it up. Yeah, yeah. One, two, three, pick it up. Future's calling us. One, two, three, pick it up. Yeah, yeah. The future's calling us, calling us. We set our sights and then we zeroed in. We kept our focus and we played to win. We're taking it to the next level up. The future's not a waste time to go. One, two, three, pick it up. Future's calling us. One, two, three, pick it up. Yeah, yeah. One, two, three, pick it up. Future's calling us. One, two, three, pick it up. Yeah, yeah. Stepping to the future is our journey and it's calling us. With our compass and direction, we're on course. It's calling us. One, two, three, pick it up. The future's calling us. The future's calling us. The future's calling us.
Young people, we always ask a few questions after you finish performance these days, and we want to know if there's anyone here that wants to answer this question. Why are you part of the choir right now? What difference does it make in your life to be able to sing? Oh, I got a hand. You come right out here. And I see another hand. This young man, you come on out here too. Did I see one more? Okay, these two young guys are going to represent this whole group. At this time, I would like our principal, we want to honor her. Principal Juanita Wright, would you please stand? Our principal. Well, Francis K. Sweet, is this on? Okay. Now, young man, what's the question? Do you remember the question?
Uh, why...
Can you help him?
You asked, "Why do we're in the chorus and how did it change in our lives?"
Okay, you get started, yes.
Well, I'm in the choir because the honor of school.
Honor of school, okay.
I'm in chorus, the same reason he's in, and also because it's fun and I like it.
It's important that we enjoy school, right? It's important that we do things that we think are fun in school. And what I love about this song that you, boys and girls, sung, it was very in-depth and thought-provoking about being the future and enjoying education and getting the most out of life while you're young and preparing for your future. So, thank you so much, Ms. Kippa, for your wonderful leadership at Francis K. Sweet with our chorus. Thank you so much.[603.66][603.66](Applause) We are also going to ask all parents to please stand, all of you that have helped to bring our children out to the school board. We want to acknowledge you as well. Okay, I would like to remind our audience that if any of you desire to be unscheduled speakers, now would be the time to pick up the form from the back, bring it up front immediately after filling it out, hand it over to Mrs. Harrison, which is to my far left, and we will acknowledge you at the appropriate time. And we will now state our vision for St. Lucie County Public Schools. Our vision for St. Lucie County Schools is that in partnership with parents and community, we will become centers of knowledge that are organized around students and the work that is provided to them. Our name will be synonymous with the continuous improvement of student achievement and the success of each individual. Our promise is to move from good to great, focusing on our core business, which is the creation of challenging, engaging, and satisfying work for every child, every day. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. We have before us the proposed adoption of amendments to School Board Policies Number 5.232, 6.17, and 6.30. Are there any here this evening that would like to speak regarding the public hearing items that are being presented tonight? Seeing none, come forward. We do have one. Okay, come on. As you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to make your comments.
Yes. Hi, good afternoon, school board members. My name is Shawna Walgrave. I reside at 2301 Tamarind Drive in Fort Pierce. I am the mother of Dylan Walgrave, a kindergartner at Sam Gaines Academy, and I'm here today in regards to the proposed School Board Policy Number 5.232. On Valentine's Day in 2009, our son Dylan was born, and on, excuse me, April 17, 2009, when Dylan was eight weeks old, I came to this very building and put him on the list for the Magnet School Program for St. Lucie County. When he was two and a half years old, he was diagnosed with autism. Over the next three years, with intense therapy and every early intervention technique available, he went from being a non-verbal toddler to a five-year-old who could not only talk, but could read, spell, and was eager to start big school. As we prepared for kindergarten, we received the news that Dylan had held the seat at FK Sweet Elementary. We took our letter down to the school and enrolled Dylan in kindergarten, informed them that he was a child with autism. At that time, we were told that FK Sweet might not be the best place for him. After many discussions with the ESE Department, teachers, and eventually through the IEP process, it was determined that the most appropriate placement for him would be the self-contained autism program at Sam Gaines Academy. Even though Dylan had made tremendous improvements since diagnosis, we all agreed he still needed more support than FK Sweet could provide. However, we also learned that if we decided to enroll him, excuse me, in Sam Gaines instead of FK Sweet, he would forfeit that seat forever, and we would need to put him back on the waitlist for the time when he was ready for general education. As you may know, autism spectrum disorder is primarily a developmental and social disorder. Many children with ASD do go on to assimilate into general education classrooms, and current research suggests that inclusive education is highly beneficial, not only for the child with ASD, but also for their fellow classmates, who see that these children are different but not less. And when they are ready to transition into mainstream schools, Dylan and all children with disabilities should be entitled to the same enrollment opportunities as non-affected As I was preparing to speak here, I referred to my notes on statistics and laws that were relevant to this policy change, but I believe that you are sitting in these seats primarily because you care about our children. And I believe that you will vote yes for this change, simply because you care about all of our children. I would like, excuse me, to thank Deborah Holly for her support and encouragement, Jonathan Ferguson and Bobby Booth for keeping me in the loop, Valerie Hall for her openness and honesty, and the ESE Department for their patience with me. But most importantly, I want to thank his teachers, Karen Madalena, Sandy Rone, and Carolyn Hammer, who have worked tirelessly and with such love and devotion. We made the decision to do what was right for our son in that moment by sending him to Gaines, and because of that, he has the most wonderful teachers we could have imagined. And we made that decision with the hope and belief that we would be able to right this wrong with your help today.
We thank you as well for coming up and sharing with us and being supportive of your Dylan, as well as other children that would need your support. At this time, Madam Superintendent, may we now receive your recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board adopt the proposed amendments to School Board Policy 5.232, 6.17, and 6.30, as presented.
Board members, we have the recommendation. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Debbie Harley and second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you again, madam.[1026.02][1026.02](Applause) Madam Superintendent, we will now move right to our special order of business.
Terrific, and we do have several special orders of business this evening, beginning with the Sunrise Kiwanis presentation regarding the St. Lucie County Fair School Display winners, Dr. Seuss Days for the Media Centers and our Education Foundation of St. Lucie County. Dr. Perry?
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Yost, it is a pleasure to bring forward this presentation and recommendation and recognition that is a result of a partnership of many years. This partnership celebrates the importance of education and the work that's done each day at our schools. It also celebrates the importance of community and all of the entities that comprise that organization and what can be accomplished when they work together. Joining me tonight for this presentation is my awesome colleague, Kerry Patrick.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, Roger Priest, and Jimmy Bouchard of the Sunrise Kiwanis join us this evening, as you stated, for presentations for the St. Lucie County Fair displays, Dr. Seuss Days, and the Education Foundation. While Mr. Priest and Mr. Bouchard make their way up to join us at the podium, please let me take a moment to provide a little background about the Kiwanis. The name Kiwanis is derived from an American Indian expression meaning "we trade and we share our talents." Kiwanis are volunteers changing the world through service to children and their communities. Members help to shelter the homeless, feed the hungry, mentor the disadvantaged, and care for the sick. They develop youth as leaders, build playgrounds, raise funds for pediatric research, and much, much more. Kiwanis clubs focus on changing the world by serving our children, one child and one community at a time. We are fortunate to have Fort Pierce Sunrise Kiwanis helping and serving our community through such projects that you'll hear this evening. Mr. Priest and Mr. Bouchard, it is definitely our honor to welcome you to the podium.
Thank you very much.[1172.02][1172.02](Applause) She's covered about three sheets. While they're getting the PowerPoint presentation up. It is an honor to be again here in front of y'all for another year, and our partnership with you has lasted for a long time. This year was fun, and we had a lot of success this year, so we just want to bring some of that to your attention this morning or this afternoon. Again, we are the Fort Pierce Sunrise Kiwanis. My name is James Burchard. This is Roger Priest. Our president is Dave McGuire. Our president-elect is Troy Ingersoll, and our secretary is Don Nelson. Tonight, we're going to come to you. We are a service organization that has a motto of serving the children of the world, as y'all just heard. We are one of two organizations here in the St. Lucie County. We meet every Thursday morning at 7:30 in the upstairs loft of Cobb's Landing, and our major fundraiser, shall I throw a shameless plug in for our golf tournament happening on June 6th at the PGA Legacy Golf Club. You can go to our Facebook page if you need more information. Our club is involved in a lot of different service projects throughout the year. Today, we're going to only talk about a few of them. This is just a short list that we put together that we have. The Dr. Seuss Read Across America, the Fair School Display, the Education Foundation, and the Christmas Parade is just four of them that we want to talk about tonight. And I'll get right into handing out money. St. Lucie County Education, we are committed to them. This is, I think, the 10th or 11th year that we've given them a $1,000 donation, which again is funded by our golf tournament that I mentioned that it was on June 6th. If you need more information, you can go to our Facebook page. So do we have, and that'll happen about five or six more times tonight. Oh, yeah, I would like to ask if everybody could come up at the end to get your checks. We're going to try to breeze through this, and then we'll take a picture at the end with all of us. So the next one. Fort Pierce Main Street, and this is money that we've already given out this year, but we did want to mention this. We are committed, this was the 25th year that we've got to do the Christmas Parade with Main Street and downtown. We had a real good time, but several years ago, it was hard to get the bands to come out, so what we did was we decided that we would pay their transportation costs. So this year, we had Fort Pierce Central and Fort Pierce Westwood in the parade with us, and we figured a parade without a band is like a circus without a ring. So the parade without the Kiwanis is like a circus without the clowns, too, if that's... That's an old joke. Anyway, again, we have a sponsorship program that we do annually where we take two, one girl and one boy out of the FFA program, and we sponsor them so that they can have a pig in the fair. This year, these are our two finalists, and they had their pigs and sold them in the fair. They had a great time doing it. This is Cassandra and Bruce. I did have some information about their pig and wrote it down on another piece of paper and left it, but they had a great time and a great education process going through that and raising their pigs. So, and then the Dr. Seuss Read Across America. On March 5th, we went to Fairline Elementary School and FK Sweet Elementary School, and we read to their kindergarten classes. We're going to offer, we are going to give them checks, each of them a check tonight for $250 that'll go towards their media center. So, and that's that one. And then we're, now we're going to get to the fair. We're going to give away $3,050 tonight. The fair theme this year was the next 50 years, and I got to say, the kids did a wonderful job of representing what's going to happen in St. Lucie County in the next 50 years. We want to say thank you, oh, by the way, it's funded by our golf tournament, it's happening on June 6th. If you need more information, go to our Facebook page. We want to thank our distinguished judging panel that went out the night before the fair started and voted on these displays, and they had a very tough time this year. We also want to thank Gertrude Walker, Supervisor of Elections, for the voting machines, Jeanne Keaton with the St. Lucie County Fair Association, all of our poll volunteers, and of course, all the schools that came out and did a wonderful job throughout the year. So, elementary school division, our winners in elementary school, first place went to Fairline Elementary School. Second place went to Windmill Point Elementary School, and third place went to Wetherby Elementary School. In our middle school division, first place went to Southern Oaks Middle School. Second place went to St. Lucie West K-8, and third place, again, in the second year in a row, Alapata Flats K-8. In our high school division, we had a private school actually win the first place, which is St. James Christian Academy. Second place went to Fort Pierce Central High School, and third place went to Lincoln Park Academy. In our Out of the Box, which is sponsored by the St. Lucie County Fair Association, was very creative this year. I don't know if y'all got to see that, but it was Treasure Coast High School, and they actually did 3D pictures, and everything that you see there laying on the ground is kind of hard to tell off of this slide, but if you looked at it through your camera, they all looked like they were done in 3D. It was just a wonderful thing that they did. So it won the Out of Box, which was sponsored by the St. Lucie County Fair Association. And again, we're going to get to the People's Choice Awards. Now, we broke a couple of records this year, and I want to thank Gertrude Walker, the Supervisor of Elections, for sponsoring this and for helping us cast all these ballots. We had 5,871 ballots cast last, this year. It's 1,400 more than what we've had in previous years. It was unbelievable, the success that we had. And Gertrude actually does this as part of her education budget. This actually, what she does is helps us with the machines so that the kids can come in and vote just like mom and dad do in the general election, and we see so many kids that just love that they get to do that, no matter what the age. So, I had a lot of people come up to me this year and say, "Is my vote going to count? Is my vote going to count?" Every year, everybody, somebody brings, somebody says that, you know, "Well, my vote doesn't count." Well, 491 votes were cast, and this year, we had a tie. Fairline Elementary School and Southern Oaks Middle School both had 491 votes. So the next time you say your vote doesn't count, well, if you didn't cast it this time, your vote didn't count, and it could have. Since we don't have a tiebreaker and we didn't really know what to do, we just split the money, and Fairline Elementary School and Southern Oaks Middle School's both going to get $250. So if we could have the schools come up at this time, because I just have one more slide,
Hey, how is New York?
Home.
Was it?
I need to stop by and find out. I need to stop by and visit you.[1674.49][1674.49](Laughter)
As we're getting ready for the picture, I do want to thank the School Board, the Superintendent Janelle Yost, and all of St. Lucie County Schools for helping us. We have our big check that we're going to present to tonight. We, throughout the year, this is $5,950 that we've given to the schools, so thank you
Thank you very much.
And they have definitely bestowed wonderful things to the children and our educational system. On behalf of St. Lucie Public Schools, we would like to present the Fort Pierce Sunrise Kiwanis with a remembrance of us and our appreciation in a certificate of appreciation. Gentlemen?[1784.33][1784.33](Applause)
Thank you.
We do want to thank you too. Have to stand out front of you.
Thank you again to our Kiwanis Club. We greatly appreciate the support you offer our schools, and I know those checks will be coming in handy. Our next presentation is for our partner, Bass Pro Shops, and I don't believe that they are able to join us this evening, so we'll move right along to the Treasure Coast Golf Course Superintendent's Association donation, and we'll call Mrs. Carrie Patrick back to the podium.
Thank you again. In support of education and student achievement, Mr. Matt Boyd, President of the Treasure Coast Golf Course Superintendent's Association, donated 10 tablets on behalf of the association. With an eye to providing for the differentiated needs of students, St. Lucie Public School worked with Student Services to identify where the devices could provide the most benefit based on individual students' IEPs. We are fortunate to have a member of Student Services and ESE family, Ms. Laura Goss, and Mrs. Kilburn, a parent of a child from St. Lucie West Centennial, who received one of these educational gifts, and they would like to share a few viewpoints.
I just want to say thank you. The iPad has almost overwhelmed Logan, too. He likes to use it too much. But we have started something, which, and I have an iPad at home, never thought about it, to use the iPad actually for him to record himself when he does certain things. He had a poem he had to recite, and he's been practicing on it. We just started doing it, and I just think it's got so many other avenues that we haven't even begun to find yet, and that I think it's going to really help him out with school quite a bit.
Hi, I'm Lori Goss, and I'm a VSLP at Centennial. This gift has been really good for the, both the young men that receive them in our school. One of the really great things that we discovered is that someone like Mrs. Kilburn's son, Logan, who does not speak, he chooses not to speak, he's a very bright boy, one of the things that he can do with this iPad is to find a program where there's an avatar, and he can go ahead and type in his work, and then the avatar will speak for him. We're still working out the kinks, but I think it's an excellent idea for him, and then it just encourages him to use that for his other assignments. It's just been a really great, it's just a really great tool to use. I worked in a clinic for about five years before coming to the school board, and we used it a lot. It's something that the teachers are sort of a little skittish about right now because it's a new thing, but I'm determined to put it in, to play with a lot of the boys' classes, so, and I really appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
And what they share is very relevant and timely, as St. Lucie Public Schools looks to see how much we can do through the use of digital devices to provide access to content for all students. We continue to enhance our content through the search, through the use of such learning tools. This supports learning innovation, and it has a multi-pronged benefit to learning and achievement in all of our schools. With the expansion of technology, students do utilize digital devices to access and interact with content in a personalized learning environment. Students also will be able to engage in quality lessons as we continue to build out this, and programs like this. They will experience growth towards their personal learning goals and take responsibility for digital citizenry. Students will sculpt strong critical thinking and analytical skills as well as we continue to provide access to such tools, and students will prepare to participate in college and the world of work to be globally competitive. With a vision for the future and 24-hour access to digital devices, students in St. Lucie Public Schools will become the producers and the evaluators of knowledge, not just the consumers of knowledge. The access to technology will allow them to locate, evaluate, interpret information, as well as collaborate with others, and engage in real-world tasks. At this time, Mr. Matt Boyd, would you please come forward, because you have opened the avenue for us to do so much more for all of our children?
This is one of those times when a very small gesture makes a huge difference in the life of a student. So thank you so much again for that donation. And our final special order of business is our special thanks and recognition, our star presentation. Mrs. Jerker.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, good evening. Our star recipient to be recognized this evening is someone that has shown themselves to be dependable when you need them most. Tonight, we give special thanks and recognition to Mr. Tate Stern. Mr. Stern is a plumber for the school district. Mrs. Young, a principal at Lakewood Park Elementary, wanted to make sure that your hard work and commitment does not go unnoticed. She shares with us that Mr. Tate goes above and beyond the call of duty here at our school, Lakewood Park Elementary. He makes sure that all the work is done in a timely manner and with safety for all students and staff in mind. Mr. Tate Stern.
Thank you, Superintendent Yost, for the special order of business tonight. We are very grateful, as a district, for our business partners and those that understand that we need your help, we want your help, we desire your help for each and every child here in St. Lucie County. Thank you for being so committed to the Kiwanis for so many years of working with our students and having something on the outside that our students could look so forward to. And also, want to also thank the Golf Course, Treasure Coast Golf Course for your donations as well. At this time, we're going to do our CTA report. Mrs. Tillman, if you would, please come join us at the podium.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, knowing that recruitment and retention is one of the board's priorities, is also one of our priorities. So, as good stewards that we are, we've done a little data collection, and I'm going to have Vicki Rodriguez kind of go over the data that we have. We just want to share it with you, and it's just basically for informational purposes tonight, so that everybody's kind of on the same page. Knowing that all that we invest in our employees is what we do best, and wanting to retain those people is also, is also something that we like to do. But she'll review that with you right now.
Welcome, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you. What you have in front of you is just an easy graph that shows turnover. Because one of the things that we heard in the last week and a half was that somehow either union leadership or the union in general was exaggerating or manipulating data and information regarding recruitment and retention and making it seem worse than it was. And, you know, our folks are out in classrooms, and they know that the person who was next door to them has left, and the person who took that person's place has left, and then that person has left, and now there's a sub, or the classes have been combined. So, we just report what we're told. So what this, what this shows you, if you look at the column, the red bars, shows you what turnover was 2010, 11. So we looked at five years, and what it showed on each board agenda, how many people were leaving on each board agenda. So it goes from August, the first board meeting in August, the second board meeting in August. And then just compared to exactly the same thing for 2014 and 15, first board meeting in August, second board meeting in August. And so as you can see, there are very few places on this graph where there are not a significant increase between what was and what is happening. So we're definitely seeing a continuing issue. In particular, if you look at January, which is what we had, when I came and spoke with you back in, I guess it was February, our grave concern about the number of people that we saw that left right after a holiday, and, you know, you can see that based on this graph. In fact, it looks like there's been more than 100 folks that have left our district between January and April, and that would be about the 100 positions that are still being advertised. So our intent is not to manipulate information. Our intent is to make sure that we keep bringing this to your attention and ask you to see the plan that the district has, or the district leadership has, or the board has, to recruit and retain teachers. Because while we can continue to talk about the issues and why people are leaving and all of those kinds of things, unless we actually have a plan to address it and put it in place and say, here are our goals, and this is how we're going to measure if we're being successful, we will continue to have the same conversation year after year after year. So that, our intent is to, again, ask you to ask and look for a plan, because there isn't one that we're aware of at this time.
Okay, and as I stated at other board meetings previously, that for our schools that have the high turnover, if our teachers are not being successful, I would ask our administrators to look and figure out, are they being successful? Because any time you lose someone, you have to, in my personal opinion, I would take it personal, says, okay, what it is that I did not do to assist this person to be successful, if he or she could be successful. Now, I'm not blind to the fact that some people have chosen the wrong profession. Okay, I realize that. But if there's some people who are salvageable, all the investments that we're making in those people, we need to work very, very hard to make sure we're keeping them. If certification is an issue, I get that, too. Those things that we have no control of, I get that. But if we've invested, and we've hired all the consultants, and they've gone through all the training, maybe we need to reevaluate what we have and see if we can do a better job. And part of our intentions are just to work with the district, because you know what? When you lose, that means we lose, too. We lose as a profession, and we all have to stick together to make sure that we're educating, creating an environment that our students can also be successful, as our teachers and our other employees are successful, creating meaningful professional development in any way that we can do this, to assure that people are getting what he or she may need to be successful. Like I said, I get the other parts of it. I've been doing this long enough to realize that. As a matter of fact, I've had to conference some people to know that maybe this is not where you need to be right now. I get it. But I do want to hold principals, administrators accountable. If you have not done what you should have done, to make sure that person can get what they need to be successful. And like I said, I ask them, we know where the great turnovers are, so let's examine that as administrators. Examine your data, because we're a data-driven district, so we all have to be accountable in that process. Now, the next portion. As we have struggled this year to create a working relationship with the district and the union, we are all familiar with ACBD, which says, always check before doing. That has been our mantra in our collaborative bargaining process, and knowing that even though we have hiccups and roadblocks, we still try to work through that process. However, as we continue to negotiate in good faith, I would have you to know, we have come to a roadblock, and we felt that we had nowhere to go, so for the purpose of conversation, we declared impasse and requested the assistance of a federal mediation conciliation services. When the union requested, after declaring impasse in March, the district accepted requests to have federal mediation. A first in our collective experience with bargaining, mediation, and impasse mediator were assigned. We continue to work as we were obligated to do, actually making some headway. On the pay-for-the-performance conversation continued as we were following through the impasse declaration. We had high hopes and expectations for the ability for the two teams to come to some understanding of mediation with the help of federal experts with nearly 50 years' experience as mediators between the two of them. Unlike some districts who have had a history of imposed contracts, management, employee relations, we always believe that cooler hairs with, with the ultimate bottom line being what's best for our district. We know we've been through some battles before, but we always knew that we wanted the best for everybody who works here in St. Lucie County. That has been our history, regardless of what it has been. We know what our intentions and where we want to go. However, it was very disappointing last week when the federal mediators were here, and we didn't have, we didn't make any progress. The reason for mediation is to seek a resolution. My team came prepared to work for the durations for a resolution. The union team of negotiators has between all of us 70 years of experience with collecting, collective and collaborative bargaining, contracts, mediation, impasse, and all elements of labor. All of those years in St. Lucie, I might add. We don't have any hidden agendas, and our only priority is to do what's right for our district. Needless to say, we didn't feel that was likewise. However, we are still optimistic that we can continue to talk and continue to seek direction and assistance through mediation. On a day-to-day basis, we have worked with the district in the worst of times to solve the most difficult issues and problems. The union leadership is once again extending our hand to request that the district take advantage of the requests that we have made at the close of the mediation on April 9th, and utilize the federal mediation and conciliation service to aid us in coming to a resolution for 2014-15, so we can move forward to 2015-2016 and put the school year behind us. And of course, I have a personal interest in this, because I want the best for this district. I've given this district 38 years of my hard work, and I don't want to go out knowing that we couldn't have come to some kind of resolution as we move forward and make it happen for St. Lucie County. Like I said, I've been here long enough, too long, to allow this to happen. And as I'm saying, on behalf of my membership, we want to do what's right, because it's right to do what's right. However, we want our voice heard, and we want board members to do your due diligence, know the facts, know the history, and do what you need to do to make it right for the employees here in St. Lucie County. Thank you.
At this time, we will ask for a CWA report this evening. Okay, seeing that we moved forward to our consent agenda. Fellow board members, we have the agenda before us. I would entertain a motion at this time.
This is Autism Awareness Month and I know that the walk in St. Lucy West and the collaboration with Westgate K8 was phenomenal last Saturday. I'd also like to say that it was very appropriate for the parent to come before us this evening as we voted on the revision to our policy, specifically board policy 5.232, in honor of autism awareness and making a decision to benefit the students of St. Lucy County. In closing, the governor did indeed sign a bill today so that we know when our start time will be for next year. Students will report to school on August 17, 2015. And with that said, the board has already approved calendar 2G. It will no longer be a draft. We will send out and post to the web the official calendar for the upcoming 2015-16 school year. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Attorney Harold, can we, no, okay. All right, we're going to start with Mr. Ingasal as far as reports.
Yes ma'am, I'd also like to thank, or not thank, but congratulate Central High School on their Odyssey victory too and they'll be going to Worlds for, I think, the second time, so congratulations to them. And I was just, just CTA, I was just looking over your turnover rate in 2014-15, just as we're sitting here talking and just was looking at this month's meeting and I see there's 50 people, but I also counted like 10, and I could be wrong, but it was 10 resignations and five terminations just from the teacher aspect, so that's like 15 out of the 50. And I haven't quite counted all of the people that are retiring too. And I'm just astonished and very grateful for those people, particularly Ms. Yost, you're even on the list today. And one of my good friends, Jay Stewart, and a couple of other people. So I want to thank you for your service in St. Lucy County because I have looked at it before in the past, but if we're counting that as turnover rate, we do have quite a few people retiring and I'm very grateful for their service here in St. Lucy County and I don't think that we acknowledge them enough. And I know it's not, what did I say, 15? So we've got like 25 other people still out there, but there's a good number there too. And we do have to look at our numbers, board members and retention and turnover, but we also have to make sure that we're looking like the unions, that is the reasons why there are turnover because if a lot of them are retired, well, we can't keep them around, particularly if they want to retire. We appreciate your service. Thank you so much.
Ms. Hensley, please.
The only thing I would have to report is that our Five County Work Group met Friday. It was one of our more lively discussions, I think, and we will be meeting again here on May the 8th, at 10 o'clock in the morning to kind of have a wrap-up from what happens at session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilsen.
A follow-up on the statement from Mrs. Yost to the Autism Speaks Walk. Thank you so much to Westgate and Bob Cramner and we are losing Bob Cramner, he is retiring and I really hope that we have a principal that can fill those big shoes, who has a special calling to work with children with autism and sensory disorders. It was just so well-attended and I spoke to so many people and I just tell you, that is a lot of work that they put together with Westgate and my hat's off. On top of what the teachers are already doing, the staff are already doing, they added this and it serves a wonderful need in our community. I just met so many people that their lives have been touched by the service that's done through our school system, so since I'll give a special shout-out to all our ESE teachers that go that extra mile, the paraprofessionals that are changing diapers every day and washing children and doing all those things that we don't think about, God bless our paras. I think sometimes we don't recognize enough the people that are in the trenches and do the heavy lifts and it is heavy lifting. And if you don't believe it, go and visit one of our self-contained classrooms and think if you could do that because it's amazing. So, since it's autism awareness and I just want to bring that up and Mr. Tomlinson, thank you for all you and your team do as well.
Ms. Hawley, report please.
Yes, I guess I need to join that same bandwagon. Ms. Yost, you kind of stole my thunder there because, but I did want to address, since this is Autism Awareness Month, the, how appropriate it was that Ms. Welgrave was able to come and speak with us tonight. It's been a long process for her family. We began working together back in August, but I want to commend her for being such a dedicated parent to the cause and I want to send a special shout-out to Sam Gaines because what a tremendous tribute the folks at Sam Gaines received from that parent tonight for all that you do as well. But I am very proud of our board, of our ESE department, Mr. Tomlinson, all the folks that work hard every day with our students on the autism spectrum and realizing that as Ms. Tillman said earlier, we do the right thing because it's the right thing to do and the action we took tonight was the right thing to do for our students that are on that autism spectrum. And as a district, we are committed to providing all of the services that we can to them. So, thanks to all of you and to Jonathan for getting us through the legal policy process on that. It meant a lot to that family and will in turn impact a lot of others. And again, to the Westgate family, thank you for a phenomenal event Saturday. I think the turnout was better than it has ever been and it was just a real honor to be part of that and to walk with folks that have the same goals to do what is right for all of our students with autism. And a shout-out to Dr. Perry. Last Thursday night, we had the phenomenal music in our schools performance, all of our music instructors, Christine Hill, I see you in the audience tonight, thank you so much to all of you for what a phenomenal performance that was. Every year, I think, wow, these students are just, can't get any better and every year, they get better. So thank you for putting that together and to all of the students and to all of the instructors that participated and got our students there. That was, that's a real treat for us every year. And one reminder that the Young Thoreadion Awards will come up this Monday night at IRSC at 6 o'clock, so all of our seniors that have been in competition for those awards with our high schools will be there to honor those as well and to thank all of the high school coordinators for working with those students throughout the years to get them to this point in their academic life. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Also mentioning the Autism Month and Autism Spectrum and all of our children that are within the district that, that need us to be there for them at the level that they need us, every child, every day, we want to honor all of you who work with our children all the way across the board, with our ESE department and other students that we have that need the extra help and taking them as far as each child can go and every child being successful where they're at. So we want to thank each and every one of our instructors that have made a difference in that area. Also, at this time, I want to personally say thank you. Many of you know that I have assisted at PAST recently and you have just flooded me with support and care through your emails, through your cards, through your flowers, through your donations to nonprofit organizations, through your presence there with my family. I want to personally say thank you and you never, you can't out-give God, that's what I always say, and so many of you have really tried to do just that and you've made me a better person as a result of your giving and your concern for my family. So I wanted to personally thank my board, fellow board members, superintendent who was present there at the memorial and even our upcoming superintendent was there. And so this city has really shown their support, our union rep was there. Thank you all for showing that we are truly a family here in St. Lucy County School District. And at this time, we're going to, seeing that there are no unscheduled speakers, we are, we come to the closing of our meeting. We want to end with a reminder of our St. Lucy County Public School mission statement. The mission of St. Lucy County Schools is to ensure that all students graduate from safe and caring schools, equipped with the knowledge, the skills and the desire to succeed. We look forward to seeing all of you at our next board meeting, which will be held April the 28th. And a reminder that we are in executive session following this board meeting. Again, we thank you for your attendance. Good night to all and we are adjourned.